Evening. I'd like to welcome you to the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. The first item on the agenda is the presentation for Employee of the Month. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, this is my favorite time of the month. We have one employee, Donna Martin, who is our customer service supervisor. She handles our more difficult customers after they've already been told probably by at least two other people, and she handles them so well that they very rarely end up filtering all the way to my desk. And it's always very comforting when she's taking care of a problem and it eventually gets to me because someone isn't happy with the decision. And having researched a number of these things, I now know that if Donna has done the research that although I still need to take a look at it, I know that it's done right, and it's done right every time. She handles all the more difficult customers very, very well. She remains calm during all of those times, and she is truly a gem that we acquired actually as part of the Water District merger. She was formerly with the Valdi Mesa Water District, and we are thrilled that she's here. She's really been performing what would be two or three jobs in other cities because of our cutbacks and things. I was shocked two months ago when she and I sat down to discuss some of her duties, and I thought that we had literally three people doing the one, or those duties that she's actually doing. In addition to all that, as the customer service and cashiering staff have gotten ready for the MUDIS implementation, which will be taking place probably in about a month or so, she took it upon herself to not just go to the trainings but also get to the point that she can help train the staff. Got to the point that she scheduled a Friday meeting for her staff to come in so that it wouldn't interrupt customer service, and then came in two hours before the rest of the staff did in order to prepare their notebooks so that they would be ready for training starting at nine o'clock. So for everything Donna does every day and for all those extras, Donna is the December Employee of the Month. Thank you, Donna. Unlike last month, we actually do have the certificate down on the table. I see it there. So Donna, if you could... She, as Employee of the Month, she gets, of course, my undying admiration. But also, she gets a special parking space in a little bit closer proximity. She gets one day off and also a free platinum detail from Griner Buick. And I do have to tell a story as she's making her rounds there. At Christmas, we were, I was trying to let all the staff go early, just a couple hours early, and we still had people coming in on that last day that we were open. And so I had to have somebody stay to handle the customer service desk, so I was sort of asking the ladies that were there in customer service for one volunteer to stick around, and they would not give up on the rest of their staff that was there. They wanted to all stay or all go. So Donna happened to be walking by, just as I was putting names in a hat of those employees. So I asked Donna, as our supervisor, I said, "Do you know what they do? Can you actually, you know, just step right in and just do their job?" And she said, "Yeah, I could do that." I said, "Okay, well, I'll just add your name in here and let you pick." So I let her pick the name out of the hat, magically she picked out her own name, and then she immediately accused me of stuffing the ballot box, and upon further inspection, all five of the little slips had Donna Martin written on it. She vowed to get me back, so I don't know if I just got you back for this or vice versa, but Donna, you're still going to get me back, I know. Thank you for everything you do. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Donna, and thank you for everything that you do for the city, and I'm glad all the other employees showed up here tonight to support you. So, thank you. All right, now we'll go into public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council under public comment? All right, seeing no one, we'll have the declaration of closed session by our city attorney.
Thank you, Ma'am McEckern. There are eight closed session items tonight. Items two and three are anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9. They are related to one another and deal with the Monsanto's case and the effects of AB26 on the City of Victorville and its redevelopment agency. Item number three is also anticipated litigation pursuant to subdivision C of section 54956.9. Item number five is real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8, and the properties and assessed parcels are all set forth in the agenda. Items six and seven are companion items dealing with the EB5 program. Item eight is anticipated litigation dealing with the SEC proceedings. And item number nine is existing litigation, and the name of the case is the City of Victorville versus First Assembly. All of the relevant information is set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of closed session or immediately prior to the commencement of the regular session at seven o'clock.
Answer is a mic, yeah. Hi. What do you have coming up? We'll be there. Okay.
We're on half of the country.
Call back to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. This time we'll have any announcements out of a closed session.
Thank you, Ma'am McEckern. The closed session items are all fully agendized. There is no reportable action with respect to this evening's closed session.
All right, at this time we'll move into our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation this evening will be led by Mary Fischel, President of the Reform Congregation of Bemdar. Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
And you'll have to pronounce that for me. And Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our Police Chief, Don Yoder.
Actually, I'd like to say thank you for inviting Congregation Bemdar Shalma Allah to do the invocation tonight. So, thank you. "O guardian of life and liberty, may Victorville always merit your protection. Teach us to give thanks for what we have by sharing it with those who are in need. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Keep our eyes open to the wonders of creation and alert to the care of the earth. May we never be lazy in the work of peace. May we honor those who have died in defense of our ideals. Grant our City Council wisdom and forbearance. May they govern with justice and compassion. Help all to appreciate one another and to respect the many ways that we may serve you. May we all work to benefit those who live and work in Victorville. May our homes be safe from affliction and strife, and our country be sound in body and spirit. And let us say amen." Thank you.
All right, I do have an update on the Pop Warner football team Cyclones' trip to Florida. Do we have anybody representing them here this evening? No one? Okay. Kristi Lofet from the Children's Network will make a presentation on the Lisa Project. Do we have Kristi here?
Thanks, everybody. Can you hear me? Is that good? Okay. First of all, I want to say thank you for putting the subject on the agenda tonight. It says a lot about the values of the City Council when you put something of this nature on the agenda, so I really appreciate that. And I know you have a ton of other business to take care of, so again, this is really appreciated. The Lisa Project is a multisensory, interactive exhibit about child abuse prevention and child abuse awareness that will be coming to Victorville. Like, I know it's a subject no one wants to talk about. It's coming to Victorville starting February 2nd, and it's a collaboration with a variety of partners. First Fives San Bernardino, San Bernardino County Children and Family Services, and Children's Fund of San Bernardino. We will be hosting this exhibit, thanks to everybody. Again, it's a fully interactive, multisensory exhibit that will take you beyond the headlines and statistics about child abuse. It's an audio tour and media exhibit that takes you on a journey through the lives of children plagued by abuse. Visitors take a child by the hand and listen to their story. The purpose is not to shock, but to raise awareness and compel visitors to get involved in helping to prevent child abuse. With this type of immersion education, the goal is that no one leaves the exhibit unaffected or unaware. And I just want to tell you about the exhibit a little bit. It's essentially, it's about 2,200 square foot mobile home, and visitors are given an iPod as they begin the exhibit, and they start by hearing Lisa's story, which is a true 911 call several years ago from San Diego. They hear the story and they're queued to go into different rooms of the exhibit, and each room represents a different story, a different child, and a different form of abuse. They hear the stories, but as they're in these rooms, each room is decorated as though you were in that house, in that child's room, in that bathroom of that house, and you're hearing the stories as a child tells them. It's very powerful, it's very emotional, let me tell you. It is a PG-13 exhibit because of the nature of the subject. In the course of the exhibit, as you enter a couple of rooms, there's a room in the middle that's called the Statistics Room, and it has statistics, child abuse statistics for San Bernardino County. So I just want to give you some of those while I have a little bit of time. In 2010, San Bernardino County had over 27,000 child abuse neglect referrals, and out of that, 10% of those were found substantiated. So that means that 10% of those referrals, 2,700, were found to be true. In San Bernardino County in 2010, we had 2,022 children inter-foster care. And, excuse me, as of September of 2011, there were 4,181 children in foster care placements in San Bernardino County. So I'm just letting you know, I want to give you a couple more statistics, just so you know that in Victorville, for the City of Victorville, in 2010, there were 2,084 child abuse referrals called in. So, and that's kind of, see, we see the same thing with the high desert cities up here. Hesperia had 1,422. So it just, it's happening, people are, you know, it's happening, that's what we're thinking is. The deal is, or the thing with the Lisa Project is that, again, it's not to shock, but it's, the thing is, is what can people do? How can they get involved to help stop abuse? So at the end of the exhibit, there's a Call to Action Room. This Call to Action Room will have counselors available for people in case they need to process anything that they experienced while going through the exhibit or anything that they're dealing with right now. That there will also be resources available for people to take regarding mental health services, any kind of other counseling services available in the area, but it's other ways of how they can get involved to help stop child abuse. We are desperately in need of foster parents, so there will be information on how to become a foster parent. We have children that need mentors, which, again, there will be raised information on how to become a mentor, and of course, donate, donate to help stop child abuse. So, again, the exhibit will be at the Victor Valley Mall. Thank you, so they were so gracious to donate part of their parking lot for a month. Starting February 2nd, actually, the exhibit is available in Spanish or English. It takes about 25 minutes to go through. It is free, and it is a PG-13 exhibit. And, again, we just want to bring awareness to this topic and then make it, it's okay to talk about, and there's ways to prevent child abuse. I want to say thank you for allowing me this time, this opportunity to talk about the exhibit, and I really appreciate it. And we did hand out bookmarks, our bookmarks available with the times and locations. So far, it's been very well received at Arrowhead Regional Medical Center for the past week. We've had over 500 visitors so far, so it's been very powerful. We'll be at the mall starting February 2nd and ending February, I want to say, 26th, Sunday. And we'll be kind of where Olive Garden is, that end where they're going to start their construction, we'll be in the parking lot over there. Is that okay? Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we'll have a presentation by the General Manager of the Historic Green Tree Inn and Suites regarding the Route 66 Festival.
Walk around here? Rather stand in one place. You're being handed some packets for what I'm going to present to you this evening, and I am here as the General Manager of the Green Tree Inn, but also as a board member of the California Historic Route 66 Association, and the Chairman for the Route 66 International Festival 2012. I've been asked the question of why Victorville, and my response has always been, why not Victorville? Route 66 has been touted as the main street of America for over 85 years, receiving its designation as the 66 on November 11th, 1926. It was the first highway of such length to be paved from one end to the other. Earlier, there were long stretches of dirt or planks floating on the sand. The road brought the nation to California twice, in the 1930s, when people were fleeing the Dust Bowl, and again after World War II. The California Historic Route 66 Association was selected at the 2011 festival in Amarillo, Texas to host the 2012 event. The selection of which state will host the event is conducted during what is called the summit, in which members from the associations in all eight states and international associations review, discuss, each bid, and vote. In the 15-year history, this will be the second time California has hosted this event. Once California was selected, a committee was formed within the California Association and tasked with deciding which city and what site will host the festival. Rancho Cucamonga, Los Angeles, Santa Monica, Barstow, San Bernardino were all considered, but once the committee was informed of Route 66 developments at the Green Tree Inn in Victorville, we became a point of interest. Upon my meeting with the committee and touring the hotel property, the decision was unanimous that Victorville was a great city and a tremendous Route 66 potential. The Green Tree Inn is one of the last hotel resorts that was built on Route 66 before it was replaced here locally by the 15 freeway. As you all know, the Green Tree Inn has a history of being the place to be in the Victor Valley, and since my taking the role of General Manager, I've been able to see, you've been able to see, our restoration process here at the Green Tree Inn. My goal along with the dedication of my staff is to restore our image and bring the Green Tree Inn back to our community. I grew up here, my family lived in Victorville for generations, my grandmother was born here in a tent plant in 1923. What does the festival mean to the City of Victorville? Upon the success of this event, we will become a Route 66 destination. We will see increased tourism and international interest in the coming months as well as the months following the event. Yes, this is our opportunity to shine, but it also has the potential to keep us on the map with annual festivals, Route 66 car shows, and more. Hotels, restaurants, and other local businesses will benefit from this event. Victorville will see a rise in tax revenues collected during this time, but even as a committee, we are committed to conducting much of our business and purchases, rentals and others, here locally. The future of Old Town Victorville was recently a topic in the daily press, and one thing we can do to begin restoring life back to Old Town Victorville is start to embrace Route 66. Rutgers University, in conjunction with the National Park Service and the World Monuments Fund, recently published the results of an economic impact study of Route 66 that was also handed to you in the packets that were distributed. The California Route 66 Museum here in Victorville assisted with that study by distributing a survey in and around San Bernardino County and at the museum. The study has estimated the direct economic effect annually along Route 66 throughout the eight states to be at least $132 million. We have planned a four-day event in August celebrating the international passion for one of America's historic icons, Route 66. During this festival, we plan to have numerous merchandise and food vendors, named headline entertainment, classic car displays, and a classic car show. Mr. Michael Wallace, known as one of the greatest storytellers of the West, and more recently, as the sheriff in Disney Pixar's movies Cars and Cars 2, will be in attendance. We've received an overwhelming response and interest from corporate sponsors that will more than cover our operation costs, and most importantly, we will bring visitors from around the world to our state and specifically, the City of Victorville. With the city agreeing to support Route 66 and the festival by placing the logo of Route 66 on all publicity, we offer you the opportunity to promote Victorville as the official host city of the International Route 66 Festival 2012. All we ask at this time is to have a representative from the city at our planning meetings to guide us on what the city can assist us with, what the city as a whole can help us with, and keep the city informed of our developments. This event is for the positive promotion of Victorville and will demonstrate to the world our passion for the history and our commitment to restore and preserve the main street of America, the Mother Road, Route 66. This is only the first of what I hope will be many briefings on our progress and estimates for attendance. This is a tremendous opportunity for our city to shine as a host city of the International Route 66 Festival. We have designed a logo, which someone has to present to you, actually. If we can hold up. That's one right there in your hand. And at this time, I'll introduce the Route 66, Ms. Route 66 Ambassador for California and U.S., to present to you the logo for the 2012 festival. And on behalf of the 2012 Festival Committee and the California Historic Route 66 Association, the California Historic Route 66 Museum, we will also be available to provide this digitally, and we will provide... This is actually the prototype here, of what we'll be distributing during the festival. And we'll recognize Victorville as the host city for the festival. So tonight, we're sharing this with you as our prototype, but we will actually be presenting one, a larger scale, to the City of Victorville as our official host community, our host city for the festival. So with that, we have another gift we would like to share with you, some hats to get your collection of Route 66 memorabilia started or enhanced. And I thank you for your time and your support. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you now. Again, thank you for your time and support.
Well, thank you, and congratulations. That's quite an honor that they're going to be hosting that here in the City of Victorville, and we will definitely offer and lend our support in whatever way we can. So congratulations to all that's worked on this project to bring it here. So, thank you. Sure. While he's doing that, you know, I'd like to, for those of you that were at the groundbreaking ceremony for the La Mesa and Esquali interchange, you witnessed a unique event, to say the least, and in case you missed it, it can be viewed the entire event on the City of Victorville's website. Although the event was a collaborative effort with Sandbag, I want to take a moment to thank our City of Victorville employees who had a part in making this event so unique. With regards to the setup and breakdown of tables and chairs, I'd like to thank the following: John Garcia, Jose Ibarra, and Adam Franklin. I'd like to thank all the guys who made the Mission Impossible sign and contributed towards the explosion. Danny Felix, Memo Barajas, Jose Alcarla, Vince Russo, Robert Kelsey, Juan Robinson, Steve Ashton, Sean Wright, Mike Lewis, Barry Stonesfire, Jerry Knutson, Joe Og, Arnold Valaria, and Dave Pruitt. And I'd also like to thank the volunteer citizens on patrol who took care of parking that day, Nancy Bruner, Ray DeCamp, Ron Rangel, Musetta Ariano, and Doris Hooks, and for coordinating everything, as she always does, and she does a great job, Monica Peterson. So, thank you to all of you who helped put on that event. As you probably read in the paper, if you didn't, construction on the interchange will begin in earnest on February 13th, so be on the lookout for all the construction crews out there, and please drive safely around them. All right, now at this time we'll have the City Clerk present the agenda to the council.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chamber's lobby, and give it to the City Clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the City Council. The public comment period is a time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the City Clerk for anyone who wishes to address the City Council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony... The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval of this meeting are before the council. The revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda, there is one item, additional information on item number 23, a letter from Robert and Jackie Conway in opposition to SB 759. An agenda item number 14 is the enforceable obligation payment schedule. Those items have been provided to the council tonight and are on the dais. Those are all the revisions I have, Mayor McEckren.
All right, we'll now move into public comment, and the first card I have is Tom LaFortune.
It's been a while since I've been up here, but I thought I'd bring something up which has probably been on a lot of people's minds as far as the finances for the city of Victorville, which they have none. And what I can see, and from what a lot of other people can see, is that you only have one thing to do, and that's to try to salvage what's left of the city, because it's down the hole so deep right now, you'll never see daylight. Including selling city land, up for bid for anybody, not special people, and try to reorganize your bonds to New York, and turn around and file bankruptcy. That's one of the I can see for this city, because this is dead in the water.
Dorothy Miller?
I have a couple of big problems. Number one, as I was informed at the last meeting, that we are traveling yet. I thought we stopped all travel. We have a conference room, we can do three-way calling, we don't need to be traveling and spending the taxpayers' money for traveling at this time until we get some money in the copper that we can afford to do things. Now, I was informed the city manager can handle our finances. Then I was informed the assistant city manager could handle the airport. Now, why are we thinking about hiring somebody else? We don't have the money. If they can't handle their jobs, either one of them, they should step down. We don't need three people sitting up there to do the job. We need somebody that knows what to do and how to handle it all. It's not getting done. It's got to be done properly. The city is not in good shape, and you all know that. Our bonds, everything else is just in turmoil. And it's just ridiculous. You need to step up to the plate and look out for the people and the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. My name is Raymond Herrera, president and founder of We the People California's Crusader. My website is Californiascrusader.com. Go there, you'll enjoy it. Mayor, I want to discuss a couple of issues with you. One has nothing to do with the city of Victorville, but everything to do with the police station, the substation up here. And that is a story that broke in the paper last week about cockfighting in Baldi Mesa. This is why I do the activism that I do, because we have the blending, or the forced blending of two different cultures, the American culture and the vile Mexican culture of Mexico. They butcher animals, they butcher people, they butcher anything they can get their hands on. Baldi Mesa is a great example of what happens when you have an underground economy facilitated by the complicity of the party politics, not just in Victorville, but Hesperia, and all surrounding cities throughout California. What we're doing is we're embedding illegal aliens in their lifestyle. How brutal can it be to, you know, fight roosters with razors, you know, on their feet or whatever? And 400 people were attending. Those are not Americans. They're not even Americans of Mexican descent. They are illegal aliens. They're all criminal elements in our society, in our cities. And I want to, you know, ask you to look in your city, look on the outskirts of your city, you'll find the same cockfighting goes on in the city of Victorville. You know, prostitution, safe houses for illegal aliens. And this is why I come to you, Mayor, because it's time that the American people stand together with the party politic. And look into your backyards, see what's happening. You know, it's a clash of the two different cultures. And I, for one, you know, am appalled that, you know, people would do this to animals. The second issue that I want to discuss with you is what happened in Sacramento. It was a bill called AB 353. It actually allows illegal alien drivers who are uninsured, vehicles that are unregistered, no license, and no identification, to have a free meal ticket when they come to a checkpoint in the city of Victorville and all cities. In other words, if the police officer pulls over an illegal alien driver and he has all the things that I just listed, his vehicle is not to be impounded. Now, Mayor, it falls on you and the police station here. We have a choice here. We can have good government and order, or we can have anarchy and disorder. And it's up to you, Mayor, to, you know, converse with the police station, you know, Sheriff Hoops, and see what you can do to clean up the city of Victorville. And I know that you're a very good mayor, and I, you know, like I said, I believe in, you know, what you say, but I'm just asking you to, you know, look a little bit further into what I've been saying to you for the last year or so. And you will find the decadence, and you will find, you know, laws being circumvented by people, not of this culture. Thank you, and God bless you.
Yes, my name's Robin Hivison, and I too am with We the People California's Crusader. And I also would like to discuss the cockfighting incident. I actually got the story over my Yahoo news service, and I was very delighted to read that the Victor Valley law enforcement and the Victor Valley Station were a party to breaking up this blood sport in Baldi Mesa. Mr. Herrera and I, we actually were advocates a few years ago for the law that now makes it a possibility to prosecute cockfighting as a felony, depending upon the circumstances. And the article talks about some of those arrested will be charged with a felony. And we were both very pleased to see that that will be one of the outcomes. There were 92 roosters, and only five survived. The remainder were euthanized or found dead, even dead in barrels. And Sheriff Hoops said this is one of the biggest cockfighting rings they had ever seen. We hope that the law enforcement involvement will send a message throughout our communities, throughout our state, to stop this blood sport, illegal in our country, legal in other countries around the world, but not in this country. We also, just a few months ago, you may have read it in the paper, Fontana also broke up a big cockfighting ring. So again, I was, when it came across my national news source, and I saw that the Victorville law enforcement was involved, I was very delighted to read that they'd taken this type of action. And I too, like Mr. Herrera, as far as AB 353, we would like to meet with the Victorville Police, Fontana Police, and get a coalition going to stand up to this bill that will allow unlicensed drivers not to have their cars impounded. As citizens in the state for public safety, we believe the least our government could do if they pull over and an unlicensed driver is to impound the car to get that driver off our roads. So again, I just want to thank the Victor Valley Police, Law Enforcement, and we would like to meet with the Victorville Police Officers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is all the cards I have for just general public comment. I do have several other cards for agenda items later on the agenda. So with that, we'll move into the Library Board of Trustees. We do have the consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Under the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, there were no items at time of posting. Moving on to the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Agenda Item Number 13, request to award a contracted DCS testing and equipment for SCLA Hangar 676 fire suppression repairs and approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $115,300.
I have a question. When I look at the staff record, it says fiscal impact, $115,300, budget amount zero, total amount and budget and account zero, remaining balance zero. It appears we have no money.
Mr. Metzler, I'll let you take that one.
Actually, Sophie, do you, are you familiar with this item?
The item is requesting an additional appropriation. There's no, there are funds available from airport operations, but in that line item, there's no budget established for the fiscal year. So the funding source, there are funds available, but not specifically allocated to that line item.
Okay, usually it says, you know, the account number that it's coming out of, which it does, but it doesn't say what the balance is. So how could I approve that if I don't know what the balance of that fund is?
Well, usually that's what the finance director signs off on, on whether or not the funds are available.
Okay, thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
All right, moving on to the Redevelopment Agency, Agenda Item Number 14 is request to adopt Resolution Number R-12-001, titled "A Resolution of the Board of Directors of Victorville Redevelopment Agency Approving and Adopting an Amended Enforceable Obligation Payment Schedule Pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 34169."
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild.
Can I have some explanation of this by the city manager?
Well, so I'm going to turn it over to Keith for that one.
This item number 14 is the Enforceable Obligation Payment Schedule. This is very similar to an action that the Redevelopment Agency had taken last year in response to then anticipated AB 126 being held up in a court of law. As we're now aware, it was about December 28th of 2011, the Supreme Court did in fact rule upholding AB X126, effectively causing for the dissolution of redevelopment agencies throughout the state of California. One of the procedural steps, among many procedural steps that is required under the bill, is that we adopt what's called out here, an enforceable obligation payment schedule, which effectively allows for obligations that are recognized, that are true, whether they're contract or budgeted expense, to at least be upheld. One of the goals here in the bill is to at least get all of the obligations that are going to carry for the next, I think in this case, the next five months, on a schedule so that they can at least be used as the plan going forward to continue the operations. This effectively creates an extension to that enforceable obligation payment schedule that we did last year, and allows the continuance for expenses to be paid through, I believe it's May 1st. Subsequent to this, there will be a process that the successor entity will have to go through to start recognizing the more longer-term natured obligations. Altogether, as a part of the dissolution process, any obligations that the agency does have has to be recognized and at least dealt with either through dissolution, or at least just through managing the obligations to make sure that the obligations are upheld.
But right now, we're not saying that we have the money to pay them, we're just saying that these are our obligations. Is that correct?
That's what this action item is doing. Obviously, when we actually undertake the cutting of checks, we have to make sure the funding is there. A large part of what you do have in the schedule has been a part of your budget already. So we do know that money is there, money in fact is there for what we'll actually cut checks to. Certainly wouldn't be the case where we cut checks where the money wasn't there.
And this isn't for new projects, this is for old projects?
This is just to continue the old activities that were budgeted or contractually obligated.
And do we have a choice to not continue them, and someone else be the successor?
That's certainly an option. It's not the recommended option at this point, but there is an option where you can elect not to become the successor entity, and at least interpret and attempt to manage at least the obligations that you had entered into in the past. That option is to allow somebody else, maybe be the county they would have to elect to do so, or there's even a process where the state can decide to appoint who the successor entity. That successor entity question that you're asking is a subsequent action on the agenda, whereas this one is just dealing with the EOPS, or the Enforceable Obligation Schedule. This would be required irrespective of whether or not we served as a successor entity or somebody else did.
I understand.
Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number 15, which is a companion to City Council Item Number 28, Resolution Number 12-005. This is a request to adopt Resolution R-12-002, entitled "Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Victorville Redevelopment Agency Confirming Designation of the City of Victorville's Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency." And again, Mr. Metzler, to your point, both on this item and Item 16, this is something that is required in AB 26 that we either adopt or we automatically become. Is that my understanding?
The bill requires that you elect yourself to become the successor entity, if that's what you desire. The bill, I'm not sure it technically requires, but it's certainly being advised that if you don't want to be the successor entity, that you notify the Auditor Controller's Office for the County of San Bernardino, so that a successor entity could be in fact found.
But by default, if we don't elect or elect someone else, do we automatically become?
I believe the bill language requires you to elect yourself to become the successor entity, but I'll defer to legal counsel to confirm or deny.
Unfortunately, it's not very clear in the bill. The assumption in reading AB 26 is if you don't do anything, you will become the successor. But it does have an opportunity for other entities to jump in if you don't elect to become the successor.
My opinion is that there'd be no reason for us not to, and for very good reason. If the county, which is, as everybody knows, an agent of the state of California, it's not an agent for the local entities here, if they assume that authority, they are also assuming the land use, as we dispose of those pieces of property, they dispose of it pretty much as they see fit. If we maintain that control in terms of the agency that disposes of the property, we not only maintain the zoning prerogatives that we've put into place, but also some of the land use decision as well. So there's a very strong hint here that if you turn it over to the state, just about anything can happen within your anything can happen within your general plan. At least this way, we have the ability to preserve our general plan in the disposal of properties within the RDA. So, I mean, there would be real, there'd be no reason why you'd want to let it to go away. I know Los Angeles had indicated, they went into debt big time, and then they said, here, state, you're taking it, it's your business, it's your problem. Very foolish. I think they're going to be very unhappy with that decision if they stick with it. Most cities will be like us, or at least I hope will be like us, is that we'll assume that authority and continue at least to maintain that control over the property.
There's also currently, I think it's either a bill or correspondence from one of the authors of AB 26, indicating that the intent of the legislature is not to impose any liability on the city as a successor entity of a redevelopment agency. So it'll just be the redevelopment agency's former assets, namely the tax increment flow that would be on the hook. The city, if it elects to become a successor entity, does not take on independent liability as a result of that.
As I understand it, the primary duty of the successor entity is to wind down, wrap up, and conclude all the RDA activities.
That is correct. The problem is you have several contractual obligations as well as bond obligations that are going to take some time to wind down. So you would be the body that oversees that, and then you are also subject to a secondary oversight board made up of individuals selected by various taxing entities, as well as the county, that then is supposed to provide oversight as to your role as a successor entity.
Do you have any sense of what the likelihood is that over the next year, that we'll get more and different legislation out of a legislature on this issue?
There is currently an effort by the state legislature right now to delay the impact of AB 26. It's currently, goes into effect, it's already in effect, but it has the effect on February 1 of dissolving all redevelopment agencies. There is a movement in Sacramento right now to delay that at least till April 15. There is also indications from both the California Redevelopment Association and the League of Cities, that they are pushing for essentially new legislation to allow for the formulation of some entity similar to a redevelopment agency to continue the same types of activities. When the legislature adopted 26, it also adopted 27, with the hopes that essentially if the redevelopment agencies were going to be eliminated, there was an opt-in option that by paying a, they call it basically a ransom payment to the state, redevelopment agencies could have remained in effect and in existence. When the Supreme Court ruled, it found that AB 26 causing the dissolution of redevelopment agencies was valid, but unfortunately invalidated and found unconstitutional AB 27, which was the bill to allow the continuation of redevelopment agencies. So the legislature was thrown a curve ball, and so there is an attempt by the legislature to resurrect something similar to what the redevelopment agencies did. Whether or not it's successful, the biggest hurdle is going to be to get by Governor Brown.
Just one other comment adding on to what our attorney just mentioned. I wish people would get irate in this state to see what has just happened. In their zeal to capture $1.7 billion this year from our collectively redevelopment agencies in the state of California, they go ahead and dissolve this thing on a two-step process, assuming that both steps are legal and proper without ever clearing it through the Supreme Court. They could have done that, or going to the voters, they could have done that. They didn't. They just did it in their hurry. Governor Brown has always had a history of being against the existence of redevelopment agencies, even though they're probably one of the few real job creators in the state. So in that zeal, here they come back and say, whoops, we made a mistake, we didn't get both of our, both hands full, and now they have to try to correct something that they created on their own problem. Collectively, you should be irate with Sacramento, you probably already are for a lot of other reasons. Here's another one, and a very serious one, that's going to affect not only the city of Victorville, almost every city in this state will be affected in some way, whether they have an RDA or not, they will be affected by this.
My concern is that in the staff rec for this item, the fiscal impact, it says undetermined at this time, budget amount in account is zero, total amount budgeted is zero, remaining balance is zero. So, you know, I'm kind of nervous about, I mean, we've already defaulted on bonds. Why would we not think that that's going to happen again if we take over this?
Well, ultimately, the successor agency will suffer the same fate that the Victorville RDA, or in the case you're talking about, is actually the Airport Authority, suffered in that we're prevented from spending other dollars to repay those bonds, and only the increment can be tapped. And to the extent that there's not enough increment to make the bond payment at this time, the same thing will likely happen again. But this action itself with the Victorville RDA is separate from those bonds. This is, the Victorville RDA and this action does not have any costs associated with it. Ultimately, the cost will be borne by the successor agency that should the city of Victorville elect, should the city council elect to be the successor agency, you will eventually sit as that successor agency. So any funding that happens would happen through that successor agency, not through the RDA, which would be eliminated.
And if I can add, one of the reasons why we believe the successor agency is necessary is to provide the best opportunity to at least ensure that a lot of those contract obligations first get recognized, and certainly, two, get interpreted properly, and three, of course, get paid on time. In this case, you're dealing with the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and it does have bonds, but it doesn't have issues with its bonds. In fact, it's met its coverage obligations, and it's also been current on its payments. The issues that we have had are on the SCLA bonds. But in both cases, in terms of serving as a successor entity, we think it's critically important to be able to help interpret the contracts. Successor agency is going to play a very, very large role. We don't necessarily see in the bill where some of the added layers of oversight are adequately staffed or have the right ability to dig their hands into all of these transactions that we have and administer them properly. So we feel it's going to be very important for a lot of the knowledge and expertise that we've had in developing these contracts to serve in that successor agency capacity. As to the fiscal impact, we are still trying to determine if there is a fiscal impact to the city. I think from our perspective right now in adopting the EOPS, we certainly see that as a mechanism to rely on the funds that are on hand to continue respecting the financial obligations that the agency does have. But we're continuing to monitor what the impacts are going to be, not only for the remainder of the fiscal year, but in fiscal years going forward. And once we have a better sense of that, we'll certainly bring that back. More compelling, though, we thought it was important, especially since the law requires that we consider action before the end of the month, to at least get the successor agency in place.
All right, the item is before the council.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number 16, in companion to City Council Item Number 30, Resolution Number 12-007. This is a request to adopt Resolution Number R-12-003, entitled "Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Victorville Redevelopment Agency Confirming the Election of the City of Victorville to Retain the Housing Assets and Functions of the Victorville Redevelopment Agency for the Bear Valley Road and Old Town Midtown Redevelopment Project Areas."
Motion by--
Here again are the same issues. The fiscal impact is undetermined, and there's nothing in any of the counts. And to go off of Councilmember Rothschild's comments about being angry about the RDA, I do believe that if the RDA was used appropriately by the city of Victorville, it could have been a good thing, but instead, it was used as a slush fund for developers. So I totally agree with the governor in abolishing the RDA.
While we're on the topic, let's make it clear that those developers who are doing redevelopment in the redevelopment agency are the entities who pay the property taxes that produce the property tax increment that retires the bonds. So the idea of calling it a slush fund for developers is a little silly. That's not how it works. The bonds were incurred to accomplish those developments. Those developments have brought somewhere in the neighborhood of $4,000 to $5,000 jobs to the airport in a larger base, and those folks out there who have built those developments are the ones paying back the bonds. That's how it works.
Just not in Victorville.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Moving on, there were no items at time of posting for the Joint Powers Financing Authority, so we'll move on to the Victorville Water District. Agenda Item Number 17, in companion to City Council Item Number 29, Resolution Number 12-006. This is a request to adopt Resolution Number VWD-12-001, entitled "A Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District Approving Agreement by and between the City of Victorville and the Victorville Water District to Add the Victorville Water District as a Member of the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority."
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis.
Yes, Norman Miller, please come forward. I apologize, I know you asked to have that changed to 17.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Norman Miller, and I just have a couple questions about this. I'm probably a little confused, but you say you need a successor entity, and my belief or understanding is that the city of Victorville is a water district. So it doesn't sound like you're going to have two different, separate successors, it's all going to be one, because it's the same people on both boards, yourselves. And I just don't know why we have to use the water district as a successor, because the last time a big thing was done with the water district, it cost the water district $20 million. I don't think that's quite fair. So is there any other entities that could be used as a successor besides the water district?
Well, I don't know, this is not saying that it's going to be a successor. We're adding the water district as a part of the Joint Powers Authority with respect to SCLA.
Furthermore, for the purposes to hopefully answer Mr. Miller's question, the arrangement provides that there'll be no liability incurred on behalf of the water district, and it would be indemnified by the city. So it's not incurring any liability by taking this action.
Norman, do you understand, this motion doesn't have anything to do with a successor entity.
I thought I read on the internet that it did.
Not this one.
Not this one. The two previous did.
The previous one?
The two previous items, but this does not have anything to do with--
I'm sorry, I'm confused then. But here's the problem with the Airport Authority. It's a joint powers authority. It needs joint powers. It needs two or more members. When the RDA goes out of existence, that's now one of the members, it needs another member in place.
Yes.
So that's why--
My question is, could somebody else be at besides the water district? Is the water district being put in there for that reason?
For what reason?
To be another entity or whatever, to replace the RDA.
Yes.
That's what I'm questioning.
To be one of the two joint powers.
Correct.
Okay. But without incurring any liabilities, it's not assuming any liabilities at this point.
It would have to agree to do so.
Pardon?
It would have to independently agree to do so. It is not agreeing to do that at this point. So it would have to be a decision by the water district if it wanted to do that at some point in the future. It is not agreeing to do that.
What's confusing me here a little bit, I think, is that you are the water district, and you are one of the entities.
We are also the redevelopment agency, that's the same, it is a separate legal entity, one of which is going to go away as a function of state law.
What if there's a disagreement? What if we had a separate water district, like we used to have? Victorville, I mean Victorville, yeah, Victorville or Bolimesa. Could they make a different decision than what you guys make?
Technically, it is a separate legal entity.
The water district is a separate--
As is the redevelopment--
Same board members as the city.
It wears a different hat, takes different actions, has different liabilities, has different obligations.
Okay, that's the part I'm not getting. If you decide you want to do something as a council member, but what if you didn't want to do it as a water board member?
That council member has the option to vote that way.
If I wanted to do it as a council member, I would vote yes. If I were wearing my water district hat and didn't want to do it, I'd vote no. It's just-- But if it's for the same thing, I don't know how you'd have a different opinion.
I don't think we would have the same issue come before both entities.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is if you didn't want to do it, excuse me, everybody here wants to do it, but you didn't think it was right. But as a council member, you vote for it. As a water board member, you wouldn't vote for it.
You are able to do that. It's conceivable that the water district would not agree to do this. It has to vote to do it itself, as the water district. The same council members have to decide, wearing their hat as a water district member, whether they want to do this on behalf of the water district, because they are tasked with running and operating the water district, just as they were the redevelopment agency.
Could anybody else besides the water district do this, like a different city or a different--
Not pursuant to the terms--
The road department or somebody like that.
Not pursuant to the terms of the JPA at this time. It has to be an entity that is controlled and run by the same people that sit as the city council members of the city of Victorville.
Well, I just think it's a conflict of interest if it's being run by the same people.
Thank you. Well, point of clarification, it has been run by the same people since VITA handed over control of SCLA--
That is correct.
--to us. So this is just replacing the RDA with one other entity controlled by this city council.
That is correct.
Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
All right, moving on to the city council agenda, I'm going to take the liberty to shift some things around. I've received some requests. So we are going to move Agenda Item Number 33 to the front of this, and then we'll hear Agenda Item Number 23 subsequent to that. So if we could go to Agenda Item Number 33, this is discussion and possible action to form a committee comprised of local Old Town business owners. Mr. Robertson?
Mr. Mayor, this item was put on at the request of Councilmember Vias. At this point, the idea would be for the city council to discuss it and take possible action. The recommendation from staff would actually be to encourage the folks in Old Town to form a committee and invite the city to have a member of this board, ex officio on their board, or something along those lines. It's what we've done with other similar community affairs types of committees such as this. I don't see a need for it to be necessarily a city-run committee. I think it would be better run by those interested parties in Old Town, and we'd be happy to participate in that committee should they want to form one.
There's an existing Old Town Property Owners Business Owners Association, will that serve that purpose?
Well, I do have a card representing that area, Barbara Powers. Barbara, did you want to come up and maybe address that and explain to us what you've got going on down there?
Good evening. It says right here in the newspaper that Larry Huber, president of the Old Town Property Owners Association, hasn't had a meeting since the recession started. So I heard from someone, it's been at least two years, if not more, that they have been together. And I am speaking on behalf of the businesses in Old Town. I know each of them by name, and if I can go ahead with that? Okay, all right. I'm going to read the same thing I read the last time, because these, first of all, my husband and I have been in the high desert since 1966. Our daughter was in Miss Apple Valley in 1985. And so we're very familiar with the city and what's been happening in the past and that kind of thing. But we're asking that for Old Town, and it sounds like, and I've been told, that the redevelopment agency, now that it would be changed, is changed, you still have monies for the Bear Valley Road and the Old Town. I'm not sure that's true, but that's the way I would understand the shift. I mean, if you have funds or you're working with something, funds to sell property or whatever, that-- that, uh, whatever small funds you can, can work up for Old Town would be great. The council, um, we're, we are asking that the council would recognize a committee with members of Old Town and local businesses, who would advise council what needs to be done, to attract business to Old Town. They're very creative, and I mean, you know, paintings, crafts, that kind of things could be put up to, uh, to change the look of Old Town. The members of the committee would show how to advance Old Town with long purpose, long-term progress, because all these little throw-at-you things for Old Town has not been working, and so they really feel like they can get together and, and create some long-term progress, and with minimal expense. An example would be to paint parking spaces on, on Seventh Street toward D, and get some people up front. All, every unanimous, every Old Town person wants parking on Seventh Street, Old Town. Just, and it's not going to be that expensive. Anyway, in the past, improvement committees were set up by the council, which was, you just heard, uh, but they were not, and they, they didn't involve business people, they didn't involve the people that are making the money in Old Town, which is a very different committee. And, um, the result was councils imposed more regulations and more code enforcement on Old Town owners. Bad feelings did result, and the business people moved out in response. An example is that big antique store that was downtown, and it moved to Hesperia. I mean, they'll go wherever they need to go to, um, you know, if you're gonna put more regulations on them and require more. And regarding the safety, I came before you last time, and, um, I told you about the car accident, the two-car accident on Seventh and A, and, uh, the sheriff on the scene, I was there when it happened, stated that these accidents happen all the time. I'm still talking about the speed that they come down, uh, from, they, they do slow down a little bit for the school, and then all of a sudden it says thirty-five, that means faster, and they go anything, anywhere from fifty to seventy on down to D Street. And I know, almost every day, I worked with this at Free, um, Josie, except for you saw, she was in the paper just yesterday, and, um, she knows, she's been there eight years. There's been a lot of people in Old Town who have been there twenty years, that is, that's, the majority that I know have been there a long time. So they, um, they're sticking it out, they're staying there, and I think you ought to have the, um, whatever, to, um, listen to them and, um, and let them try something. So the two-car accident happened, the sheriff on the scene said that these hack, these accidents happen the same place all the time. And since I've seen you, I complained about the fact that they don't even slow down for the crossroads, and, um, they do ignore the crossroads, and even, even when the pedestrians are present, well, there was a girl hit. She, about a couple weeks ago, she was hit on one of the crossroads, and the emergency wagon took her off, and we don't know what happened, but, um, uh, yeah, it's just not safe, uh, if, uh, I don't know who controls the speed on, uh, Old Town. But twenty-five miles an hour is the, uh, limit at, um, the school, and that could remain twenty-five miles an hour, that might slow them down, or even the parking, the new parking that's on the front, in front of stores, might slow them down, or even some kinda speed bumps, or whatever ideas people would come up with. But that's a very dangerous spot, and I just wanna let all of you know that. Okay, the, uh, business...
Barbara, if I could have you, it's been waiting for you.
Wrap it up, oh, sorry, okay. I, I have a list of the businesses who are for all this, especially the parking, and...
Provide a list to them.
I will provide a list to her, and the last thing I have is, uh, sorry, I didn't know, I got so carried away. Okay, the committee members below of Old Town and local Victorville businesses have made this decision, that Angela Vias would best suit the needs as a liaison with them to Victorville City Council. So should you agree to this, that's, that's our choice. And I'll give her the paperwork, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we should do it.
One consideration is if the council takes a formal action to form the committee, there's a chance that it would then be interpreted as a Braun Act-type committee, requiring notice, public meetings, et cetera, so...
I think the, the business owners in Old Town ought to be able to form a committee, I don't think the city needs to approve it or something.
Yeah, we have ad hoc committees, uh, in the Golden Triangle, it's not something that's formally, formalized by the city. The ad hoc committee does come before us, give us advice, give us their opinion, uh, why couldn't we have the same thing in Old Town?
You have that, certainly an ad hoc committee, I'm saying if there's a formal action by this council to form a formally, formal type of committee that meets regularly, you may have a problem. But to have an ad hoc committee, or have a member of the council participate on another, on another committee is absolutely fine.
Good evening, I wasn't gonna speak, but my name was mentioned.
And you are?
Pardon?
And you are?
Larry Huber, uh, one-six-four-five-four Villa Drive. We've had a property owners association down in Old Town for thirty years, long before the RDA. We've helped, we've been the city council many, many times. We've asked business owners to join, we've walked the streets to get them to join, they wouldn't join. They would come, they'd come, uh, they'd say they couldn't make it lunchtime because they're busy, on and on and on. Mark Ward, Route sixty-six was very active, um, the Barber School was very active, Quebec, Halsted Building, and on and on and on. So the more people we can get involved in Old Town, the better it is. So if they can get property owners to help us out for parking and everything else, I'm all for it. We took a break because there's no use just having a meeting and have coffee, to talk about nothing. The Sheriff's Department is doing, doing a good job downtown, whether some people believe that or not. I'm safer downtown than I am up at the mall, so, uh, but the more power we can have downtown, the better it is for us. So I, I totally agree, if they can form a, a business, uh, association and get something done and, and help the community, I, I'm all for it, and we'll support you a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, um, I've been involved in various fashions over the years with not only the Old Town Owners, uh, Old Town Property Owners Association, but at one time they even had a merchants' association. It's always been a goal of this council to, to be supportive of their efforts. They had formed privately, uh, certainly invited staff, and staff did participate quite regularly by attending the meetings. It allowed staff to have the opportunity to listen to their issues, if they had issues or concerns. Certainly also allowed for an opportunity for the city to share with those members, that constituency group, as to what, what the city was doing. And, uh, I know they haven't met for some time, certainly, um, if they were able to, to rally up a group, um, you know, would be opportunistic, I think, to not only hear their concerns and see if there's something we can do about those concerns. What I've heard tonight, you know, sounds to be a couple of issues floating around, some is dealing with blight, uh, and, and trying to resolve some of the blighting issues, whether they're physical or economic in Old Town. That's one set of issues that certainly a redevelopment agency was very heavily relied upon to try to, to, to resolve. Then also, you've heard about some traffic issues that certainly, uh, would require some looking into. You know, I, I certainly believe we can continue to offer, um, ourselves as being available is, is to hear what their issues are, if they can, you know, get together collectively. It wouldn't make sense to have three or four different groups down there, I think we start becoming inefficient that way. Certainly give us an opportunity to share what we've done, which over the years has been significant using the redevelopment agency. We've developed a strategic action plan with, that we actually worked very closely with the Old Town Property Owners Association dating back to two thousand and five. It actually helped us start shaping what was to become a new specific plan for that area. Unfortunately, the specific plan hasn't gone through, because what it actually does is try to encourage, uh, more strict development response, or requirements, to try to achieve a different goal, and that's repositioning Old Town. You know, one of the things that unfortunately kinda gets mixed in the balance of, of, um, serving Old Town is if, if we're trying to develop it a certain way, certainly regulations are gonna be required to help assure that it gets developed a certain way, which is certainly not the most popular thing to do in today's economy, and that's why we've actually put that item on the shelf. But we have spent a lot of money, which I think we could actually share with them, with respect to buying properties. One of the biggest challenges in Old Town in terms of redevelopment is trying to assemble enough property to do something meaningful down there. You have a property ownership makeup that's traditionally, uh, very small-natured parcels, so to do something meaningful, it typically requires a very substantive land assembly, which the RDA actually conducted two, if not three, large land assemblies where we acquired properties, we actually demolished properties to, to help eliminate some of that physical blight. Unfortunately, um, that's not enough, and, and one of the biggest challenges going forward is the fact that our most primary funding source is now gone away. So, you know, we can certainly continue to, to listen and participate, and to the extent we can attempt to resolve, I think, you know, certainly it's appropriate to, to consider serving, uh, that role, but I'll, I'll take any direction, or will take any direction from you as a council.
Mayor, that, that story is exactly why we need to be the successor agents. Taking down that property is an incredibly complex and difficult thing. State doesn't care, they, they'd go in and sell it all. We want, we need to assemble it so we can create a project area or a piece of real estate that somebody would wanna come in and do. They don't wanna come in and take a twenty-five-foot sliver, and the guy next door says, "Oh, give me a million, and I might sell you mine." We were able to, over a number of years here, thanks to Keith's work, able to assemble that. Here we come out of the RDA now, we're losing our ability to at least assemble, at least we can lay down the footprint of what's required to do business down there now, with respect to the zoning, with respect to the CCNRs you might wanna impose on the, on that property as it continues to be taken down. Somebody will come in and probably take down a few more, uh, pieces and then put something in there, but, uh, we wanna make sure at least we can influence that process and not have it a ske- helter-skelter thing. That was a great tool, uh, while we had it here, was working on Old Town. They didn't have any money of their own, but as we blended it with the other parts of the RDAs within the city, and able to borrow from one portion to build and increase that, the Old Town began to have a vision of being something in the future that would be pretty classy. I think, um, it was a city in Texas with the River, Riverwalk, uh, that was a classic example of taking some old, old town real estate and begin over a period of time to build it into something pretty nice. Well, that potential is there with the river and everything. The RDA's gone, so we don't have the money anymore, but we certainly wanna control what we have, so that as we get the developers in, and they'll come someday, uh, at least we can say, "Okay, here's what our theme is, here's what our plans are, and here's what we've put in place." You need to continue that process.
Okay, so the item is before the council as to, uh, do we ask, uh, the Old Town Property Owners Association, the merchants, to join together and create an ad hoc committee, or do we formalize and commit, uh, create a committee of our own? What's the pleasure of the council?
Well, yeah, I think it should be created, kinda like the, uh, Old Town Property Owners, they, they had their own committee, their own officers, they elected their own officers. That way there's no control from the city council over anything. And, uh, yes, we can have a representative from the city council attend their meetings, or staff attend their meetings, um, but I think that would work better, 'cause then it's an independent association, and they're not appointed by the city council, therefore they're not obligated to, to any one of the city mem- uh, one of, either one of the city council members, or the board as it is.
I agree with that.
All right, so unless there's any other further discussion, uh, we would encourage you to, uh, get together, form the committee, um, and we will have council liaison attend at your request, as well as our staff, to participate and, and address any of the issues that you bring to our attention on a go-forward basis. So please just communicate with staff so that we can make sure that we can have someone there. All right, moving on to agenda item number twenty-three, uh, this is discussion and possible action regarding Senate Bill seven-five-nine, which is Solidad Canyon Mine Act. This was, uh, brought to the council at my request, and at the request of the mayor from Santa Clarita, uh, that we, uh, consider this bill. We did continue this from our, our previous meeting, just due to lack of, uh, additional information, I wanted the council to have time to actually go over the bill, as well as we did receive additional, uh, written correspondence, um, not only from the county, we do have additional written correspondence here tonight, uh, from Robert and Jackie Conway, and also as part of the agenda item, uh, some additional information. And I know I've, I've got a, a few folks here that would like to speak to us on this. Before I get into that, I defer our city attorney, is there any additional information you'd like to share with council?
You do have the staff report, uh, as you will recall, the city council previously supported the prior version of this bill, uh, which was the Buck McKeon Bill. This bill is somewhat similar in many respects. The essence of it is to, uh, have a method for, uh, the cancellation of contracts that currently exist between CEMEX and in, and, and the federal government that affect, uh, the mining operations in the City of Santa Clarita. This bill essentially allows for, uh, the termination of those contracts and sets up a method of compensation to CEMEX for giving up their rights to mine in Santa Clarita, and the way it does that is to provide for, uh, the transfer and sale of BLM land, a lot of which was previously in Victorville's sphere of influence, but those boundaries got, uh, refined down. So a lot of the property is now within the jurisdiction of the County of San Bernardino. There are portions that are located within the boundaries of the City of Victorville. It allows for BLM-designated disposal land to now be sold, uh, to, and, and get, and the City of Victorville and the County of San Bernardino would be given first rights to acquire that property, essentially a preemptive right, uh, to acquire the property that was within its jurisdiction, uh, and then it could turn around and, and hopefully facilitate the development, transfer that property to private development. So you'd be getting public land into, into, uh, private development. The impact of Victorville is less significant under this version of the bill as a function of, uh, refined language in the bill that deals with the underlying jurisdiction having, essentially, uh, the, the, not really rights of disposition, but, but the ability to negotiate for the acquisition of that property, it now goes to whoever the underlying jurisdiction. I don't know if we can get the map up, but there's a map that goes with the bill that shows the territory that's affected by the bill. So you did get, receive a letter from the county previously, and I've included, um, a package and some of the documentation supplied by the City of Sa- Santa Clarita in connection with it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I read the staff report and received a letter from Supervisor Mitzelfelt and Supervisor Gonzalez, and, uh, and I've had some other communications, and I will tell you, where I am right now is I am unclear on the difference between the old bill and the new bill. I'm unclear on what the, what the effect is on Santa Clarita and the effect on Victorville, I'm unclear on what properties involved, what the mining rights are, if there, I think there are lots and lots of details that I'm not clear about, so I'm gonna ask, and is the mayor of Santa Clarita here? Did he drive all the way here?
Yes.
Oh, gosh. Well, let's hear him anyway. But I'd like to ask for a workshop on this to get, uh, to get it thoroughly hashed out, I'd like CEMEX and TXI and Santa Clarita and the, yeah.
Is that too much to request?
Well, I, that's, that's fine to request, I, I do wanna acknowledge two people that have requested to speak to us here tonight. Mark, uh, might I switch? Forgive me, Mark. Please help me in the pronunciation of your last name.
I'm on a first-name basis with everyone. Honorable mayor and councilmembers, thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you this evening about Senate Bill seven-fifty-nine. I'm Mark Ostoj, and, uh, I'm with Gresham Savage in San Bernardino, my address is five-fifty East Hospitality Lane in San Bernardino, as I said. I represent TXI, and TXI and its predecessors have been mining and producing cement products in this very area for approximately a hundred and thirty years, so they, they have a unique perspective on, on this geographic area. The, uh, in addition, the state geologist has designated, uh, much of the land mass within the area affected by Senate Bill seven-fifty-nine as a mineral resource zone, and the purpose of that designation is to... And the purpose of that designation is to protect valuable mineral resources, and there are valuable mineral resources here that are critical for use and development in the construction industry. So the MRZ has been designed to protect those resources and to promote mining by, in effect, creating a preserve where mining can expand and is expected to expand. We, as you might expect, are very concerned about SB 759 because what it, in effect, does is it fragments the ownership of lands within this area. It will lead to a disposition of the disposal lands, all of which are within the mineral resource zone, and create the possibility of those lands ending up in third-party hands. TXI's holdings, both its active mining holdings and its mining claims, which it will develop in the future, are immediately adjacent and right in the middle of what's going on under SB 759. And we're gravely concerned about the impact that it will bring about. Now, there was a predecessor bill sponsored by Congressman McKeon a couple of years ago, and TXI's position regarding that bill was similar. We had a grave concern because we saw it as affecting the integrity of this mineral resource zone. Now, the county of San Bernardino and others worked very diligently to attempt to define a list of BLM lands outside of this immediate area that could possibly be substituted and used as an alternative to the disposal lands contemplated under the old McKeon bill. That assembly of the alternative list was completed, but for some reason, when Senator Boxer sponsored Senate Bill 759, that went by the wayside, and we've not heard anything further about that. So action in support of SB 759, in my opinion, will be action against the present and future operations of your very valuable existing mining interests in this area. So I urge you to oppose, not support, Senate Bill 759. I'm happy to hear that there are some of you that believe a workshop would be helpful. We'd be very, very interested in participating in that and expounding further on our concerns about this. So once again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have, but I want to go on record that from TXI's standpoint, we're gravely concerned about this bill and we do urge that you oppose it. Thank you very much.
The mayor of Santa Clarita, Lori Ender?
Thank you very much, Mayor McHeekren, members of the city council and staff. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I think this is a perfect forum. I know we've heard from a business entity. Santa Clarita's been also dealing with a business entity in the person of CEMEX, and we're all dealing with our residents and what's best for the community. So the idea of starting a dialogue and potentially doing some sort of a workshop, to have all the parties involved, is a terrific idea. Senator Barbara Boxer introduced Senate Bill 759. This is the latest in a series of bills. There have been many introduced to Congress by Senator Boxer and/or Congressman McKeon in an effort to resolve a dispute, which is now over a decade old, between the city of Santa Clarita and CEMEX to site a large-scale sand and gravel mine in our community. Although our community is home to several small-scale aggregate mining, the size of the proposed CEMEX mine is incompatible with the urbanization which has occurred in the Santa Clarita Valley over the past two decades since the mine was initially proposed. In 2008, your city council expressed its support for an earlier version of the legislation, which is HR 5887 authored by Congressman McKeon. The current bill, SB 759, is a refinement of the earlier bill, incorporates changes suggested by members of Congress, committee staff, business and environmental interests in an effort to address concerns from both of our communities and to improve the measure's chance of enactment into law. This legislation provides an opportunity for the city of Victorville to realize some of your economic development goals through lands that are now in federal ownership, identified for disposal by the federal government, and being made available to both the public and private sectors in a significantly more expedited timeframe than would have been possible with the previous legislation. I know that members of your council and your staff worked closely with Congressman McKeon and his staff in the past to ensure that the legislation met the goals of your community. We believe that this new bill continues to meet the goals that are important to your residents while addressing concerns in Santa Clarita and ensuring that CEMEX receives fair compensation for its contracts with the Bureau of Land Management. We also have been informed, as we've heard from Senator Boxer's staff, that the county of San Bernardino has expressed some concern about the parcels included in this legislature. We are currently working with Senator Boxer to address the expressed concern. We anticipate that the Senate Energy and Natural Resources Committee will consider the bill this spring. So on behalf of the city of Santa Clarita and our council, I'm here to request your support of this legislation, which will have a long-term positive impact on both of our communities. I really appreciate this opportunity. If there is a chance for us to put a workshop together, we would love to include Senator Boxer's staff and possibly some representatives from CEMEX too, so that we can see the whole picture. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'm going to have to go along with Councilmember Kennedy's request. There's just so much, so many different things flying around about this bill and not completely understanding all the nuances of it and the differences between previous bills, this bill, and addressing some of the concerns by TXI here tonight as well as the county of San Bernardino. I think it's appropriate we have everybody at the table to have a workshop so we can air all this out. Perhaps some of the issues that TXI brought up here tonight could be addressed in amendments to the bill. Why that wasn't addressed when the bill was authored, I'm not sure, but perhaps we can get some answers to those questions. So if the council's agreeable to it, I'd be agreeable to workshop.
I have a question for TXI representative. Come back up a minute. Ostojch.
Yes, sir.
The McKeon bill, was that a compromise bill that everybody kind of agreed with or somebody was kind of forced to?
We didn't agree with it. We participated.
We never did.
No, we did not. We participated in the discussion of locating an alternative group of BLM parcels that could be substituted and used as disposal lands under the bill. Now, had that ever come to fruition, TXI's position might have changed. But as drafted and the map that was prepared for the McKeon bill, which is the same map or substantially the same map, has been prepared for use in this bill, it's right, I mean, we're right in the middle of it. And as I said, it fragments a very critical mineral resource zone and, in my opinion, can lead to no good for the mining industry.
It seemed to me, if memory serves me correctly, that Victorville was going to be basically the receiving agency in totality to the whole parcel business so that the whole decision of what, so it couldn't be fragmented and we'd make a clean transfer, but all the deals had to be done simultaneously or it wasn't going to happen. Did I get that wrong?
Well, the McKeon bill and this bill both contemplated public agencies as having certain rights, rights of first refusal, let's say, on certain areas of land. But I think the ultimate end was that unless a public agency stepped up and acquired the parcels, they would be sold to various private interests. And that's really what I am concerned about, and that's the fragmentation that could result. I don't know how many public agencies today are really interested in buying large tracts of land, but we were concerned about McKeon. We're concerned about this, sir.
Yeah, no, you're right on. This is a moving target. This is a totally different footprint than what it was even two years ago, even a year ago. So we do need...
We know there's no way the city of Victorville's going to step up and buy any of that land.
No, we weren't going to do that, but we were going to be, they needed a public agency to encompass the whole transaction so that we could keep it together, but that's kind of falling apart. I'm not even sure where the RDA would have fit in that aspect, so a workshop is definitely necessary. If any piece of this, but I'm going to be sensitive to TXI's interests, and they're our partners, they live here. So whatever their interests are, you're going to have to convince me that that's not what's in our best interest as well. They've been here a long time. So that's where part of the workshop is going to be, have to be focused as well. I just want to give everybody a fair heads up back there.
Can we get the mayor back for that workshop?
Okay. Good. Well, and I did move it up in respect for you and your drive. I didn't know you were going to be here. And again, the reason that this was brought before this council was at the request of the mayor of Santa Clarita. This council did at some point in the past consider this and support a bill similar to this. So I wasn't going to ignore another mayor. I felt it would be appropriate for our discussion. It looks like we would continue to discuss this if the council's okay with scheduling a workshop for some point in the near future so that we can get all the parties at the table to talk about it. So with that, I think that's the direction to staff to attempt to schedule that in the next...
Sure, I'll have Carol Lee contact the city of Santa Clarita and make sure that we get TXI representatives there as well as CEMEX, both from Santa Clarita and the Victorville CEMEX, if those are in fact different arms of the same agency. And then also to invite the county as well. So that'll take some coordinating efforts and we'll get it on the collective agendas as quickly as we can.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll now move into public hearing items on the city council agenda, agenda item number 18. This is a public hearing called to hear arguments for and against ordering the formation of Street Lighting Assessment District Number Two and approving the engineer's report as set forth in the following resolutions, 12-001 and 12-002. I will not read them in their entirety. They are on the agenda. I will go ahead and open the public hearing on agenda item number 18. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the council for a decision.
Motion by council member Vias, second by council member Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 19 is a public hearing to hear arguments for or against granting a public convenience and necessity application for M and R non-emergency transportation as set forth in resolution 12-003. I will open the public hearing on agenda item number 19. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and return it to the council.
Motion by council member Vias, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Councilmember Vias, may I get a vote from you? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 20 is a public hearing to hear arguments for or against amending portions of Title 16 as set forth in proposed ordinance number 2288 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Victorville Amending Portions of Title 16 to Permit Relocation of Existing Billboards Under Limited Circumstances and to Further amend Sections of Title 16 to Harmonize Current Sections with Such Relocation Language." I'll open the public hearing on agenda item number 20. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? Ms. Miller? You have 21 A, B, and C, but I don't have anything on... Not that I'm aware of, no. Anyone else on agenda item number 20?
I would just like to have a planning representative, Chris, maybe give us a little condensed rundown.
Is this sort of a final resolution of a discussion we had months ago about billboards?
Yes, it is. What do you mean? This has been going on for years.
And Andre can help me out. I'm not real familiar, as familiar as Andre is, but basically the billboards are currently prohibited in the city of Victorville, and they are also prohibited from relocating if a site wants to develop or if the site becomes an issue with future right-of-way or issues like that that the city has to deal with. If that becomes an issue, it can become very expensive with litigation for the city. This allows M Mechanism to either get rid of the billboard and digitize it and also get rid of two other billboards in the city that are owned by the same company, or they have the ability to relocate that billboard somewhere with the approval of the Planning Commission recommendation to the city council.
And I'd just like to add, this was one of the issues that was created in connection with the dispute we previously had with Lamar. Lamar is happy, I believe, with the language we have Donovan Collier here, Representative Lamar, and he's indicated that they're comfortable with this language. So we believe this works well for the city as well as helps resolve prior disputes that we had.
I have one question. I've saw for the first time here, probably in the last week, that digitized billboard along the 15 coming home. I spent more time looking at that billboard than I've spent looking at any billboard, and I've suddenly wondered if that was a traffic hazard. I should have been watching the road and I wasn't. I was fixated on that billboard.
They have regulations on how often they can flash, what content they can put on there. That's Caltrans. But I agree, it's definitely, when it's new to the area...
It was great. I was impressed, but...
Similar to the ride on the 15 that caused all the issues.
I was encouraged too. The new technology in billboards is, I hope it doesn't get too entertaining, but it's crystal clear and easier to read for sure. That's another point.
Well, when you hear about all these signs, you know, and there's obviously maybe some safety factors involved, but when you go to Vegas, I mean, that's all you see. And I don't know if you see more accidents there anywhere else.
Exactly. And the benefit is you get rid of two other non-digitalized billboards while approving one digital one, so.
Now, the digital ones that apply just to the billboards or can say a property owner with a large enough property or an accomplice could, they erect one of these?
No.
Digitals? No. Why not?
They're prohibited.
Sorry?
They're prohibited.
This is a very limited bill to basically allow for potential relocation of existing billboards, which if you're, if they have a right to be there, you're going to have to compensate them to get rid of those billboards. And it gives you the option essentially of reducing the number of billboards by allowing for the replacement of a digital billboard, replacing essentially three non-digital billboards. So it is somewhat more restrictive and cleans up the billboard issue.
Well, I understand they're not allowed, but what is the reason why not?
Part of it being inability to control content for the businesses, safety issues, glare, a number of issues. It's just one of those community, what you want, what do you think is right for your community was decided on.
Andre, just to be clear, this is not specific to Lamar?
That is correct. It is not specific to Lamar.
This is general to all billboard companies.
This is general to all, but in the past, we've had a dispute with Lamar and they are happy with this results. They're on individual, but this is a citywide ordinance, has nothing to do specifically with Lamar. It does impact them.
I'll read the title of the ordinance, ordinance number 2288, "An Ordinance of the City of Victorville Amending Portions of Title 16 to Permit Relocation of Existing Billboards Under Limited Circumstances and to Further amend Sections of Title 16 to Harmonize Current Sections with Such Relocation Language." There's a motion by council member Rothschild, second by council member Kennedy, to wait for the reading and introduce ordinance 2288. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, agenda item number 21 is consent, and I know that council member Vias would like to pull item A.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll pull item A and deal with that, but before the rest of the council is a consent calendar, B through I.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by council member Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, moving back to agenda item 21A, Ms. Vias?
I just wanted to make a comment that the city attorney, legal fees for this agenda
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by council member Rothschild.
My apologies, Mr. Miller. Before we vote on this, I'm going to have him come forward.
I just have a question. Probably should have asked this years ago.
I just have a question, probably should have asked this years ago, or maybe I don't even know what I'm talking about, but between the SCLA and the city of Victorville, I don't see anything on the payments, what do you call it, the demand schedule or whatever. Anyway, I don't see anything different that refers to the airport specifically. Is that included in this, or is that a separate item, the payments to the airport? The bills to the airport?
Have to be included.
That's all included as one check run?
Well, my, from what I've been hearing from different people and that, it would seem to me that that was kept separate, and I know that's more work and everything, but if that's kept separate, then so many people wouldn't be complaining about Victorville and the airport and the waste of money and all that. Because most people think you are subsidizing the airport, and I know you're not. I don't think you are anyway, but I mean, those are separate bills that are coming through. But when it's all put on this one agenda item, it looks like it's something Victorville's paying as the city. So I just wanted to bring that up. And the other thing is the payroll, are there separate payrolls with the airport employees?
Um, the, all employees are employees of the city. However, the, the city employees who work at the airport, their chart, their time is charged to the airport, just like the redevelopment agency and the water district. Those employees who work in those functions, their time is charged to those agencies.
Okay, well, that, that to me seems okay, but just, it seemed like the expenses for the airport should be kept separate. And I know, I know there's a lot of things like this one you had on here for the airport, for the repair of the hangar, that's a separate item, but these items here that's on this thing, looks like it's all Victorville.
Right, the item that was on the airport authority agenda, when the checks are actually cut to that vendor, it would appear on this demand schedule, you are correct in that, but it will still be charged to the airport itself.
Yeah, I understand that it's charged to the airport, it just, it's not...
Wouldn't it be true too that some checks, for example, the check to the city attorney gets allocated to maybe four or five different locations? That may be a little bit, we should ask our new finance director if that is a realistic way to present the demand schedule. Let's check with him, maybe...
That's the next item on your agenda. That's the next item on your agenda, sir.
Well, if we get a new finance director, we'll, we'll talk to him about it.
Yeah, just sit right up here, because I know you've got a card for that one.
Motion carries with council member Vias voting no.
All right, agenda item number 22, this is a request to approve the contract for the new deputy city manager in the amount of $80,153. Mr. Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The history on this position is essentially, I was the deputy city manager for approximately the last seven years or so, and under John Roberts, I did mostly project work. Some of my major projects were in fact the merger with the water districts, handling that as well as other things. Under Mr. Cox, I continued with that job as the deputy city manager. However, during the first reorganization that he did, that we did, he also named me as the director of administrative services, eliminating three other director positions of director of finance, director of human resources, and director of information technology, information services at the time, and gave me that title. When Mr. Cox retired effective June 30th, this council appointed me effective July 1st, leaving the deputy city manager position vacant. The work that Mr. Metzler does as the assistant city manager is completely different than what I used to do as the deputy city manager. His work is materially very similar to work that he's been doing for most of his career here, at least in management, and I've been adding a few things here and there as the months have gone by. This position itself would actually be replacing my old position as deputy city manager and supervising those three departments in administrative services, excuse me, divisions, human resources, finance, and information technology. He would not be the finance director, we don't have a finance director position, however, he would essentially function in that role, he would also be the city treasurer. Mr. Metzler and I, as well as two other city managers, interviewed nine applicants in December, and ultimately Andy Okoro was the leading candidate on all four of our, of our opinions. He comes with a wealth of experience as well as knowledge. He is a licensed CPA in California. Should he be approved, or should his contract be approved by the council? He'll be the first ever licensed California CPA that we've had running that, that function for the city, and I'm looking forward to that. He has a master's degree in accountancy from the University of Houston, as well as over 20 years of local government finance experience. The item on the agenda tonight is not necessarily to appoint him. The municipal code actually calls out that that's the job of the city manager, and I inadvertently deleted that, that phrase, so there's a little bit of confusion perhaps in that sentence up the middle of that first paragraph of the agenda item. The municipal code specifically calls out that, that the city manager appoints all employees of the city except for the city manager and the city attorney, which is obviously the purview of the city council. So because this is a contract position, the contract itself has to come to the city council for approval, because obviously it's over $25,000. So Andy is here in the audience, Andy, if you could stand up for just a moment. And I'm hopeful that following tonight's vote, should it be approved, that he'd be able to start hopefully within about a month or so.
That's the, that's just the base salary?
The...
This is the salary for the remaining part of the fiscal year, right?
Right, this is the fiscal impact for the, for the current fiscal year, correct. The annual salary is at $155,000 a year, a little bit more than, than what I made. It actually slots him in between the assistant city manager position and the department head positions. Because of the importance of the finance function of the city, I've opted to put him on contract. The contract, as the council will recall, there was concerns and a little bit of a delay in the assistant city manager's contract due to the severance option. The severance option for this contract is only six months rather than the 12 months that this council approved for both myself and Mr. Metzler.
Mr. Miller, you did submit a card on this one.
I don't want you to take offense on this, but as I remember, maybe I'm wrong, but when the different titles were combined, where one person was handling different departments, I believe it was voted to increase their salary because they were covering two or three jobs? Is that possibly true?
That is not true. Actually, all the department heads who took on additional departments did so at the, at the same salary rate.
Okay, well, what I, point I'm trying to make is, I thought maybe you were getting more money as a, handling the finance department also, and if you were, would that be reduced when you get the new finance director?
Essentially, what we're doing is replacing the work, replacing Jim Cox. Jim Cox's position I actually took, leaving a vacancy, so this isn't a new position. My role as the city manager is not to manage individual departments like that.
I understand that. But you weren't, you know, I hate to say it this way, but you weren't getting extra money handling the finance director as the city manager also?
No.
No, I was not.
No, not at all.
In fact, Mr. Robertson took quite a, quite a different pay amount than our former city
manager, quite reduced in order to help the city along, so...
Just something in my mind brought that up.
Now receive any additional pay for...
Is he referring to the proposal that Jim made to, to give raises to both of you at some point last year because you were assuming larger duties, and that, I don't think that ever happened, did it?
That, that didn't happen, and I'm not sure if that's specifically what he was referring to.
That might be.
But no, I was not receiving additional pay then or now in order to also be a department head.
That's fine. And my last question is, does the potential finance director have any comment on what I asked about as far as the...
Yeah, let, let the vote occur, because he can't talk until...
Give it a little time.
Thank you. All right, so this item is before the council.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by council member Rothschild. Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, may I get a vote from you? Would you like me to enter the vote for you? Oh, there we are. Motion carries with council member Vias voting no.
Agenda item number 24 is a request to adopt resolution number 12-004, entitled "The Resolution of the City of Victorville Hereby Authorizing the Director of Development to Apply for Waste Tire Cleanup Grant Program Cycle TCU-14."
Motion by council member Vias, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 25 is a request to award a contract to FCO Construction in the amount of $29,307 and appropriate additional funds from FEMA grant in the amount of $26,093.28 to complete the Osom Wash Access Road and Channel Repair Project.
Motion by council member Vias, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 26 is a request to approve the grant application to the 2012-2013 California Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery, CalRecycle, city-county recycling
Motion by council member Kennedy, second by council member Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 27 is a request to award a contract to Waxie Sanitary Supply for the purchase of janitorial supplies for the remainder of fiscal year 2011-2012 in the amount not to exceed $60,158.63.
Motion by council member Vias, second by council member Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, moving on to agenda item number 31, this is a request to adopt resolution number 12-008, entitled "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville Electing to Retain the Housing Assets and Functions of the Victor Valley Economic Development Authority for Those Portions of the 1993 Victor Valley Project Area Situated Within the City of Victorville."
Mayor, this item was put on the agenda prior to our getting information from VITA as to whether the VITA board would take an action to designate itself for the housing functions. We'd like you to consider this item as a contingency that in the event the VITA is unable to, it has voted to take over those functions, but in the event it is unable to as a result of implementation of AB 26, then this would come into effect. So only to the extent VITA's unable to do it.
So then the motion should indicate that?
That this is done as a contingency only to the extent that VITA is unable legally to take over these functions.
Motion by council member Kennedy, second by council member Rothschild. Motion carries with council member Vias voting no.
Agenda item number 22 is a request to adopt a notice of exemption for authorized use of city-owned property for the La Mesa-Nesqually interchange.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by council member Kennedy. Motion carries with council member Vias voting no.
Agenda item number 34, a request for a direction from council on moving forward with the establishment of a bus shelter advertising program. I believe this was at the request of council member Vias?
Yes, we have general manager Kevin Kane here to answer any questions.
Yeah, before we get to Kevin, actually, I'd like either Sean or Doug Matthews to come down and just give the council an update on where we are with this potential project. As the council will recall, it came up in discussion towards the latter part of last year, and city staff has been researching the option of advertising once again on our bus shelters. There is some history of legal action against the city from many, many years ago. In fact, it took quite a bit of time to research all of that, and rather than printing all of that information in the agenda, we, staff preferred to, to give a verbal presentation on where we are with this. There are really essentially two options, well, three options. One is to do nothing. One is to direct staff to move forward with an advertising program and bring it back to the council that would be run by staff. And then the third option would be to have staff move forward to prepare an RFP for, to bring in a separate third party to administer such a program. Mr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Robertson, and basically you've covered all of the issues. Essentially, some 15-plus years ago, there was an advertising program for the, the bus shelters throughout the city of Victorville. That contract was with a company that actually owned the facilities and had the advertising program. The city, I believe, received, you know, some small revenue from that, but the big problem was the, the content and the advertising created problems. When the city tried to get control of that, they found that they, within the contract, they couldn't control it to the extent that they really wanted to. There was a lawsuit filed, and from what we can research, it cost the city some $600,000, and they ended up abandoning the contract with the company. And since that point in time, we have purchased the bus shelters and bus stops so that the city owns that property, and therefore the rights to control the content of any advertising falls within the city's purview, and the, it can defend itself from any claims of First Amendment rights to, you know, free speech. So with that, staff started to look at the potential of the number of bus shelters that we have, the number of panels, the capital investment that it would take to get into a full-blown advertising program, and the potential revenue. And these are very, very preliminary numbers, but with the, with the assistance of VVTIA, our understanding is that they would have the ability to provide advertising panels for some 32 panels, maybe 15, 16 bus shelters, plus the 14 that are existing. We would have a total of 46 panels. And the projected revenue from that, again, very, very rough numbers, could be as much as $160,000 per year. Offset against that, there would be certain expenses. That is based upon a city-run program where city staff would need to go out, solicit advertising space and lease that to certain companies. We've drafted up contracts, we've drafted up a policy so that we can control the content. And, you know, there are certain rights that the advertisers would want to, to make sure that the, the advertising panels are kept clean, graffiti free, you know, any panels that are scratched up, as you so often see, would be replaced in a, in a program. So those kinds of expenses would need to be deducted from that. The advantage is that we do have a program for routine maintenance of those bus shelters, so the fact that, you know, there would be frequent visits to each shelter by city staff to, to maintain it, this additional responsibility isn't nearly as costly as it would otherwise The potential would be that, you know, let's say after the first year, the capital generated order of magnitude, again, $160,000, that would be sufficient to fund panels on all of the rest of the bus shelters within the city. As long as we can sell that advertising space, that potential could rise to as much as $400,000 per year. that potential could rise to as much as $400,000 per year. Given the fact that the LTF funding is about to sunset, that would leave a hole in the city's revenue stream for maintaining the bus shelters. That is about... We're currently receiving about $900,000 per year from LTF funds. But that is, like I said, approaching its sunset, and we need to fill that hole. This would certainly help to do it. With the full build-out, $400,000 potential, that's if it is run by city staff. The other alternative that Mr. Robertson mentioned was to enter into a contract with a company that would come in and basically handle it all. And the city would receive some limited revenue, from that program. Really, to go out and try and find out what that is is very difficult without actually doing a serious RFP process, setting down the rules, and see who comes in as the highest bidder, the company that is going to manage an advertising program and guarantee a revenue stream for the city. It's obviously going to be a lot less than if city staff does it in-house, we believe. But we really don't know until we would go out and do a formal RFP process.
Sean, what would be the cost? I mean, you've got revenues of $160,000 to $400,000, but there are costs associated with that. What would those be? Staff?
Yes. There would be... There would need to be maybe a half-person year for administration. Probably, order of magnitude, the first phase might be $15,000 per year on the maintenance. So if we get into the final second phase, it might double. So it could be $30,000 a year, plus maybe another $30,000, $40,000 to administer the program. In the final, in the final phase two, that would be if we had $400,000 revenue, there might be... We're just using rough numbers right now. But of that magnitude, $60,000, $70,000.
What happens to the panel when it gets sprayed with graffiti?
They're behind Plexiglas. And so if it's minor, they should be able to clean it. There's a coating on that Plexiglas. But if it's just beyond cleaning, they simply unscrew that panel and put a new one on.
At this point, I guess the staff's recommendation would be to direct staff to pursue the bus shelter advertising program to the extent that we need any rules and regulations brought back to the city council. We would do that. I've talked to staff about it, and they believe that they can perform the work and eventually return more dollars to the city than hiring a private company to come in and subcontract that work to.
Well, we have an analysis showing that.
I think, you know, at best, what we can do is to get some kind of numbers, rough numbers, from companies that would give us that order of magnitude.
That would be great in a comparison of what it would cost in-house.
Right. I think you can also get numbers from, say, municipalities that do this, perhaps, and get some of their...
Yeah. Actually, the City of Esprilla just started on the program to do it themselves. What we understood was that the contractor that they were using, the revenue stream was very minimal.
All right. So is that the direction that the council would like to have staff go in?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number 35. This is council committee reports. Councilmember Rothschild?
Good evening.
Member Kennedy?
Just to let you know, we began today. The audit committee met with its staff and the auditors to begin the process of reviewing and approving the annual audit reports. That'll continue for probably a few weeks until things are finalized.
Councilman?
Victorville Transit Authority, a staff will be taking a RFP for Vanpool Services, a turnkey operation, to the Board for Approval and Release at its February 28 meeting. VVTIA has programmed Proposition 1B funds for procurement for three low 40-foot coaches. And Mayor and transit will be visiting on Wednesday to study the VVTIA's Cougar Mountain accounting software and to tour the new facility.
You've heard a lot about what's been going on at VITA here tonight, so I won't rehash that. Moving on to agenda item 36. This is discussion of possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. Ms. Vias?
Yes. I'd like to agendize videotaping and doing the live stream like we do this meeting for the planning commission meeting.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm okay, but it doesn't sound like we have concurrence.
So why is that?
I'm sorry. Repeat what it is you're asking for.
To videotape, to livestream, just like we do these meetings for planning commissions so people could see what's coming up in their city and get involved in the planning commission. It's like transparency in government.
Has the planning commission asked for that?
No, I'm requesting that we agendize it.
I don't mind talking about it. I'd like to hear from the planning commission. I guess I'd...
I think, yeah. If the planning commission wants to do that, then...
We can put it on our agenda. Let's ask the planning commission to come and tell us what they think.
We can agendize that for discussion sometime after the next planning commission meeting.
Can we ask the planning commission to discuss that before?
Yes. That's my point exactly. So it gives the planning commission an option to have a discussion and make a recommendation to the city council if they so choose.
Rothschild, do you have anything for upcoming agenda?
Just the workshop.
Okay. The workshop. We discussed that. All right. Reports from council members and staff. Mr. Robertson?
I don't have any. No reports today.
Metzler, anything? Ms. Vias?
Yes. I'd just like to comment on Mike Rothschild's comments on RDA and how important it is to have RDA for Old Town. We've had our RDA for, what, 13 years? And look at Old Town. Did us no good.
Well, obviously, you don't understand what an RDA is. RDA takes a new building to put a new tax increment in there. It doesn't magically happen. So the first thing you have to do is begin to take it down. What we did was actually work with the rest of the redevelopment agencies that we've had in the city and borrowed a little money so that we could begin to make a footprint in the Old Town area where a developer would come down and put a building down there that'll generate tax increment. We have no tax increment down there because we have no new growth down there. That's precisely what an RDA is supposed to do, is to help you create new growth. The old property tax goes to the state of California. All the new property tax, the new building, stays in the RDA until you liquidate that debt. And that's why RDAs are so nice for local governments. At least they have an opportunity to do something for themselves where the state seems to be incapable of doing. And now, of course, Governor Brown feels that he needs to take that money because it's been quite a success up to now. So that's the reason why we're losing it. But it has done a good job. We were moving along and still are. And to the extent that we've got something there under the RDA, we're going to use that bit of development to facilitate the Old Town. So it's an asset for whoever sits on here. If you're going to sit down there with the old committee, that's fine. At least there's some real estate down there that is in larger creases than just 25 feet by 50 feet, and a whole bunch of those. I mean, it wasn't the large parcels. They were scattered every which way to Sunday. And their people ownership titles went back 100 years. I mean, it's incredible down in that Old Town area to try to develop that. It's very difficult for any old city.
Oh, that's right. We bought the cleaner with the contaminated dirt. How much is litigation costing?
Good evening. Did you have anything? Well, the only thing I'd like to say on the RDA issue, obviously, they're going away. But the Foxborough Industrial Park is a prime example of redevelopment being successful. The hundreds of jobs that have been created over there and certain real estate individuals who have benefited by the millions from selling property in that area. Obviously, I'm surprised that some of them are against redevelopment agencies. But unfortunately, those opportunities are going away effective February 1st. So with that, we are adjourned.